All right, Karen's here, so before we get started, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jason Howard, the Director of the Adult Ministries with Stone Creek Church, to lead us in our invocation.
Father, we come to you tonight as we start this meeting, fathers we dare every month. And first, we pray for our mayor, Joe Lockwood, and also our council members, Councilman Thurman, Coons, Lusk, Hewitt, Longoria, and Councilman Large. And father, we just pray for them and their families, but more importantly, we pray for their vision, for their focus, and how they lead and guide this city. God, we just are so blessed to have, again, a council who honors and invites you into just the decision-making process and creating a city that continues to be one of the best, not just in the state of Georgia, but also, God, in the nation. God, give them the guidance and, I think, just the vision for what you want to see happen in this city and continue to improve just everything here, God, for the residents of the city of Milton. Father, just thank you again for just your word and for your guidance, and then we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, February 20th, 2013, to order. Will the city clerk please call roll or make general announcements?
Mayor, I'm gonna start up, 'cause I've got our script, and then I'll hand it back to her. Good evening, Mayor and council. Be happy to call roll for the February 20th, 2013, regular meeting, where I'd like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting would like to provide public comment either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment. You're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items in the first presentation. Now, those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will please identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. City council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided, however, that such an individual shall have, shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item called. A demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you would expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt is traveling and excused. Councilmember Joe Longoria is with us by phone tonight, which is an amendment to the open meetings law that allows him to call in, and we're just gonna need him to do a couple of things at this point, is to say that he's with us and then also let us know where he's calling in from. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Where are you calling from? Here he is.
I am calling from Minneapolis, Minnesota.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And councilmember Lance Large.
Here.
Now, would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Clerk. And I want to welcome everybody here tonight. We appreciate you being here. And I'm gonna ask the city clerk to call our first item.
Our first item is approval of meeting agenda. This is agenda item number thirteen zero three eight.
Okay, I know there's a couple of things we need to change. Chris, you wanna add an emergency?
Two things I'd like to amend at the approval of the meeting agenda. The first is to add an executive session to discuss current litigation. And the second is to add, on an emergency basis, under new business, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Milton in opposition of House Bill 176, which is a limitation on municipal zoning authority for cell towers. The reason that that becomes an emergency basis at this point is that the General Assembly is in session, and our next meeting potentially would occur after a final action has been taken on that particular House bill, so it was to be able to consider it tonight. Those are the two items I have.
Okay. Are there any other items considered, council or staff? If not, I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as stated by staff, except to add an executive session for current litigation and a new business item opposing, a resolution opposing agenda item number 176.
House Bill.
House Bill 176 regarding cell towers.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the published agenda, as well as those two additional items. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's unanimous. Okay, next item's public comment. First, ask the city clerk, do we have, we do have some public comments?
We just have zoning this evening.
Okay, all right. We don't have any general public comment? I'm gonna go ahead and read the rules anyways, just, it relates, could relate to zone. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. No discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. Now, we will move over to the consent agenda.
Our first item is approval of the February 4th, 2013, regular city council meeting minutes. This is agenda item number thirteen zero three nine. Next, approval of a professional services agreement, task order, between the city of Milton and Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., for additional design support for Birmingham Highway at Providence Road intersection. Agenda item number thirteen zero four zero. Our next consent agenda item is approval of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Engineered Restorations, Inc., for bridge deck repairs to Woodbridge, Wood Road Bridge over Chicken Creek. Agenda item number thirteen zero four one. And lastly, approval of a license agreement and email distribution agreement between the city of Milton and Broker Savant, Inc., for online commercial property listings. This is agenda item number thirteen zero four two.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, let's move on to our reports and presentations. City clerk will please hand the first item.
This evening, we have a proclamation recognizing National Girl Scout Cookie Day 2013. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, on our agenda, we've got a proclamation honoring National Girl Scout Cookie Day, which took place on February 8th. Because of the work, their work selling these famous cookies, the girls learned goal-setting, decision-making, money management, people skills, and business ethics. Great tools to have going forward in life. And I'd like to read a proclamation and then have, and it looks like we've got a representative from the Girl Scouts to be here to join us, the council, after I read this proclamation. Whereas, National Girl Scout Cookie Day is a day designated to celebrate the Girl Scout Cookie Program and the five basic skills girls learn by participating in the program: goal-setting, decision-making, money management, people skills, and business ethics. And whereas, for more than 100 years, Girl Scouts have been engaged in girls' lives, serving as a resource and expert on their growth and development. And whereas, through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls in grades K through 12 discover themselves and their values, connect with other girls, and take action to make the world a better place. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton, do hereby applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to support the leadership development of girls in the state of Georgia, and proclaim February 8th, 2013, as National Girl Scout Cookie Day as part of the Girl Scout Cookie Program. And if the council would join me along with our Girl Scout. I'm about to say, we, we have called today the Girl Scouts, and we're gonna be here a good night, and so we kind of get your step up and back, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Shouldn't you have the Girl Scout Cookie Mom in there?
Yeah.
I did a script. Should anybody need it.
Oh, oh.
Okay, I'm gonna take three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Come on, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I was a Girl Scout leader a long time.
I was.
No, I didn't.
Everybody hear that?
Girl Scout cookies out there, so anybody needs them.
Okay, we don't have anything on our first presentation or public hearings, and we'll move on to our zoning agenda. If the city clerk will please read the rules.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The planning commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the community development department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respected local government at least five days prior to the planning commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member, and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ 1215, 15260 Hopeville Road by Reunion Park LLC, to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to H Historic District for the existing building to be utilized as a country store on .5240 acres. This is agenda item number thirteen zero three two. First presentation was at the February 4th, 2013, regular council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The subject site contains .5240 acres. It's a vacant 1,179 square foot structure formerly used as a country store. The applicant seeks a rezoning to the H Historic District for a country store. Go back. That slide shows you the existing zoning on the site, which is AG1. Oh, that's, sorry, that's the existing zoning. I believe the, well, we're gone. The next slide shows the 2030 comprehensive plan map, and the comprehensive plan shows this area is called for, for agriculture, equestrian, and estate residential. It was a site plan submitted October 4th, 2012. However, this plan is superseded by a revised site plan submitted January 9th, 2013. And the essential differences between the original site plan and this revised one really dealt with the driveway entrances and the configuration of the parking on the site. In terms of background, on August 20th, 2012, the mayor and city council designated the historic building as historic. This requirement must be met prior to a request to rezone to the H District. Additionally, Section 64-953 subsection C states, "The proposed historic use shall be limited to those historic structures identified on the subject property and may not be expanded." Therefore, if this request is approved, a condition will be provided listing uses to be allowed based on the previous historic use of the structure. This item was deferred at the November 27, 2012, planning commission meeting to the January 22nd, 2013, meeting to allow time to resolve traffic issues and proposed zoning conditions. There were four citizens who spoke in opposition at the January 22nd meeting stating the following: One, inconsistency with the future land use plan and AG1 uses surrounding the site. Two, hours of operation not addressed, proof of fuel tanks removed, not addressed, site issue, site distance issues, traffic study not conducted on a good date, parking issues, not to allow catering, delicatessen, and carryout uses. Planning commission's recommendations at the January 22nd, 2013, meeting was approval conditional. The planning commission recommended approval conditional based on the following additional recommended conditions: One, that the site distance for 45 miles per hour be satisfied, that uses be the same as the prior use, but do not include delicatessen, catering, carryout, and that no food preparation be conducted on the premises. Three, the proposed signage, as proposed by the applicant, should not be approved, but shall be consistent with the requirements of the existing sign ordinance. In regard to the site plan analysis, pursuant to Section 64-954, Development Standards for the H District states the following: "In order to allow for the unique nature of the properties receiving the H District classification, there are no district-specific development standards. However, all other requirements of the subject property's overlay district and the city of Milton zoning ordinance, including but not limited to those identified in Section 64-955, shall be maintained. In addition, the Milton City Council shall consider the subject property's overlay district and city of Milton zoning ordinance as it pertains to the proposed historic use, and may adopt reasonable conditions of zoning with respect to the following without the need for variance." Per the following sections, the applicant and staff are requesting the following conditions for the subject site as requested for a revised letter of intent received by the community development department on January 9th, 2013. One, Section 64-1141 subsections 3A, reduce the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to a 10-foot landscape strip along the south property line of the property intersecting with Hopewell Road and running north 68 degrees 21 minutes 12 seconds west, a distance of 89.69 feet. Staff notes that this is already mentioned in number three below. Therefore, this condition is not required. Two, Section 64-1141 subsection 3A, reduce the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to a 10-foot landscape strip along Thompson Road and a minimum 40-foot buffer at the east rail end to a 36-foot buffer on the west rail end along the south line of the property, parallel to Thompson Road, running from the corner of an existing driveway north 80 degrees 44 minutes 27 seconds west 190.43 feet to the westward property line. And this will be shown on the site plan in orange. And the site plan will be forthcoming in a minute. Continuing on section three, Section 64-1141 subsection 3A, "To delete the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the southwest property line of property running from Hopewell Road, north 68 degrees 10 minutes 12 seconds west 89.69 feet, and north 21 degrees 33, 34 minutes 48 seconds west 35.46 feet to the northerly line of an existing driveway for parcel two, and north 60 degrees 44 minutes 57 seconds west 29.5 second, .57 feet." Shown on the site plan below as green. Four, Section 64-1433 subsections F1, "To reduce the 25-foot setback for parking adjacent to residentially used property to 10 feet along the south property line. Staff notes that this zoning reference is taken from the C1 Community Business District requirements. There currently is not a similar requirement for the H District, but this will be included in the conditions of zoning." Shown on the site plan below as green. Five, Section 64-64-1145 subsection 6C, "To allow onsite parking located to the front of a building or between a building and the public right-of-way," being Hopewell Road. Section six. Section 64-1141 subsection 1A, "Provide a minimum 10-foot wide landscape strip along all public streets." Shown on the site plan below as blue. These items listed above will be included in the recommended conditions. And then, if you look at this plan here, all the colored areas really reflect what I just read in terms of buffers and landscape strips. We tried to visually show you what was being requested. Continuing on signage, the applicant is also requested to permit signage in keeping with the historical designation of the store building. These include projecting signage and wall sign logos, as seen in the photographs within the letter of intent dated September 4th, 2012. Before installation of any signage, the owner must first obtain a certificate of appropriateness under Article 18 of the Milton zoning ordinance. A condition of zoning will be included to reflect this request. And then, here's a picture showing the type of historic signing that they would, would like, and you can see a logo along the side of the building, historic logo, as well as the sign in the front over the porch. Parking requirements, the site plan submitted indicates a total of five parking spaces, of which one is handicapped accessible, located in front of the building. The existing structure proposed for retail use is 1,179 square feet. Pursuant to Section 64-1410, calculations, four spaces per 1,000 square feet are required. Based on this calculation, a total of five spaces is required. Traffic study. A traffic study has been provided by the applicant. The traffic count was conducted on December 17th, 2012. Based on this count, the maximum number of cars stacked on Thompson Road was six cars. This is an acceptable number of cars to meet the 300-foot or 95% queue distance as required by public works. In addition, the revised site plan indicates a right-in, right-out only on Hopewell Road. The entrance driveway was widened for full access on Thompson Road. Environmental site analysis. The environmental site analysis report is sufficient and satisfies the requirement of Section 64-2126. A field survey of the site was conducted by staff to verify areas addressed in the ESA report. The proposed site does not contain wetlands, floodplains, streams, steep slopes, or sensitive plant and animal species. As mentioned above, the building was designated historic on August 20th, 2012. Staff also notes that in the past, the building has operated as a general store with gas pumps. According to the applicant, the tanks were removed prior to the purchase of the property. Public involvement. The DRB meeting was held on October 1st, 2012. The DRB expressed concern for parking in front of the building. They wanted the site distance checked. They supported signage of historic nature, and there was unanimous support for making the building look historic. CZIM meeting was held on September 26th, 2012. There were five members of the community in attendance. All the community members lived close to the property and had concerns regarding traffic, more intensive commercial use of the property over time, and commercial spot zoning. Staff has not received any correspondence regarding this development.
Public participation meeting. The applicant hosted the meeting.
Use your phone, okay?
Oh. The applicant hosted the meeting at their offices on Winwood Parkway on October 25th, 2012. There was one citizen in attendance. He expressed the following concerns: Traffic control in the area due to the existing configuration of the intersection and the 45 mile per hour speed limit. Drivers currently drive across the property to cut the corner. And also concerned over the use of the property and impact on the area. In terms of standards of review, it has been determined that the proposed general store will be suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. The site fronts on two roads to the north and the east. To the south, a single-family residence is located on the same parcel. The residentially used property to the west is located approximately 300 feet from the subject property, with a 50-foot under-stirred buffer adjacent to it. The proposal will not adversely affect existing use or usability of the adjacent properties as described above, if approved with the recommended conditions. The subject site may not have a reasonable use as currently zoned AG1 agricultural based on the small size of the building and its location at the intersection of two streets. Based on the traffic counts provided by the applicant and review by the public works department, staff does not anticipate a significant impact on existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools as proposed if the required site improvements listed in the recommended conditions are made to the site. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the following comprehensive plan policy if developed with the recommended conditions. Policy is, we will expand the identification, documentation, and protection of historic, cultural, and archaeological resources in the city, and when possible, encourage access by the public. Continuing on the standards of review, the proposed H District structure will be utilized as a country store, and that type of use is not consistent with agriculture, equestrian, and estate residential. But the purpose of the H Historic District is intended to allow for a historic structure to be used, protected, renovated, and preserved on its historic value to the community. It may allow a specific previous use to continue in a structure where that use would be considered non-conforming, as defined in the current city of Milton zoning ordinance. This designation will help preserve the rich traditions of history and culture evident in Milton's original settlement. Therefore, staff supports the approval of this request to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to the H Historic District. The proposed use will not be environmentally adverse to the natural resources, environment, and citizens of the city due to the required development regulations. Recommended conditions, if the mayor and city council choose to approve the petition, the specific conditions are: If this petition is approved by the mayor and city council, it should be H Historic District, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the mayor and city council. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows: Country store and associated accessory uses on a .5240 acre, including the existing 1,179 square foot structure, and allowing only those uses that are specific to the previous historic use. Catering, carryout, and delivery. Delicatessen, retail store or shop selling groceries, hardware, seed and feed, sundry items, homemade food, beverages, et cetera. Also permitted are seasonal items such as pumpkins, hay bales, pine straw wreaths, and Christmas trees, so long as they are sold and displayed within the building or on the covered porch. Following uses shall be excluded: Garage, automobile repair, or automotive specialty shop, gas station, landscaping, business, or garden center, financial establishment, drive-through, commercial amusements, liquor sales and package stores, motels, hotels, adult-oriented entertainment businesses, including adult bookstores, adult entertainment or adult establishments as defined in Article 3.3.3, check cashing stores, coin-operated laundries, video arcades, pool halls, nail salons, beauty salons, barber shops, flea markets, second-hand surplus retail shops, roadside vending, roadside produce stands, or seasonal business, precious metal sales, and billboards. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following, to the revised site plan received by the community development department on January 9th, 2013, said site plan is site-specific and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance. All other applicable city ordinances All other applicable city ordinances and these conditions prior to the approval of a land disturbance permit or certificate of occupancy. Unless otherwise noted herein, compliance with all conditions shall be in place prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Recommended conditions continue of number three. To the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations. A, provide a ten-foot landscape strip along Thompson Road and a minimum forty-foot buffer at the eastly end to a thirty-six buffer on the westly end along the south line of the property, parallel to Thompson Road. Running from the corner of an existing driveway, north eighty degrees, forty-four minutes, twenty-seven seconds, west one ninety point four-three feet to the westly property line. B, provide a ten-foot landscape strip along the following property lines as described as north sixty-eight degrees, ten minutes, twelve seconds, west eighty-nine point six-nine feet, and north twenty-one degrees, thirty-four minutes, forty-eight seconds, west thirty-five point four-six feet to the northerly line. Of an existing driveway for out parcel two, and north sixty degrees, forty-four minutes, fifty-seven seconds, twenty-nine point five-seven feet. C, provide a ten-foot setback for parking adjacent to residentially used property along the south property line. D, to allow onsite parking located to the front of a building or between a building and the public right-of-way, being Hopewell Road. Provide a ten-foot landscape strip along the frontages of Hopewell Road and Thompson Road. F, to allow additional signage depicted in Exhibit A, projecting sign on the front porch with store name, and wall signs on left and right sides of the buildings with vintage logos using colors associated with logos, e.g., Coca-Cola logo sign. G, all improvements to the site structure and signs shall be reviewed and granted a certificate of appropriateness by the City of Milton Historic Preservation Commission. H, the proposed porch on the south side of the building, as depicted in the revised site plan dated January ninth, two thousand and thirteen, shall not be constructed. Four, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following requirements, dedication, and improvements. A, access to the site shall be subject to the approval of City of Milton Department of Public Works prior to the issuance of a business license, land disturbance permit, subdivision plat, or certificate of occupancy, whichever comes first. Entrances shall conform to Chapter forty-eight Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances, or be reconstructed to meet such criteria as required by the Department of Public Works. At a minimum, the following shall apply. One, driveway shall provide a minimum uninterrupted ingress-egress distance of twenty-five feet measured from the right-of-way line to the nearest edge of drive or parking space. Two, driveway's site distance shall be certified by a professional engineer. Three, if at any such time in the future the Director of Public Works determines that the traffic generated by the site exceeds the design criteria, he/she may require the owner to conduct a traffic study to determine if the development warrants any additional improvements at no cost to the city. If improvements are determined to be warranted, owner shall install those at no cost to the city, and that the site distance for the forty-five-mile speed limit shall be satisfied. B, dedicate at no cost to the City of Milton prior to the approval of a business license, land disturbance permit, subdivision plat, or certificate of occupancy, whichever comes first, sufficient land as necessary to provide the following rights-of-way. One, provide at least ten point five feet of right-of-way from the back of curb of all budding road improvements and along the entire property frontage. Two, provide right-of-way miter at intersection of Hopewell Road and Thompson Road. Conclusions. Although the proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the future land use plan's recommendation of agriculture, equestrian, and estate residential, it is staff's opinion that by rezoning it to H district, it is consistent with the intent of the H historic district to preserve the rich traditions of history and culture in Milton. In addition, staff has included a set of recommended conditions that will ensure that the proposed general store will not have a negative impact on the surrounding community. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of RZ twelve dash fifteen to rezone from AG one agricultural to H historic district. That is my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Before we go further in the public hearing, is there any questions right now for staff and council? Bill?
I have some. Kenny, could you go over the site plan, the colored up site plan?
Oh, yes.
One of the issues that came up was parking, and the number of parking spaces. And they are shown on the south side of the property. Is that a handicap space up in front of the front porch?
Yeah, I'm looking for. Yeah, but you want to do it. You're going to have to get the big site plan. Yeah, just.
Direct TV. Through all the channels.
Did you want the colored?
The colored one.
The colored one. So you want to go back.
There it is.
And your question is in terms of where the location of the handicapped parking spaces?
Right, is that the handicap in front of the porch?
Yeah, it looks to me like it's in the front.
Okay. One of the questions that came up during the planning commission was the number of parking spaces that were provided here. And the thought was that there was no room for any other parking, particularly employee parking. The brown-colored area there, which I believe is the septic reserve field, is that an area possibly for parking?
I would certainly like the applicant to weigh in on this, but to us, it certainly looks like it's possible. We're looking at essentially a ten-foot landscape or buffer strip around most of the parcel, with the exception of that brownish-orange area. And we could easily just extend, rather than having it all be comprised of a buffer, we could indeed subtract out the buffer area and just put in two landscape strips along the north boundary line and along the south boundary line.
Right, that'd make more sense.
And then the remainder in the middle could be used for additional, maybe about thirty feet, I would think, and that could be used for additional parking spaces.
Good point. That's all I have right now.
Hold up the exhibit that the, it's in the applicant's, that was submitted. Guess on September fourth, is that no longer valid? Because that showed actually one, two, three, four, five, six parking spaces. I guess that's, that was in the package here.
And the applicant did revise that site plan to widen the driveways, and I think that they would probably be able to speak more in terms of what happened to that last parking space. But I think the configuration of the driveways impacted that.
Okay. Also, as far as on the septic area, it's always been my experience, don't pave or put anything over top of the septic drainfield, so use of that area. Plus, even if you drive on it, compacts the soil, could cause the septic drainfield to fail as well, so I don't know about actually using that area. The parking would be on.
That's a reserve.
Is that just a reserve area?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think perhaps the applicant could probably better speak to that as well.
You got enough on, Bill? Received several comments, and I've heard a lot of discussion on it, too, is the traffic situation on Thompson as it intersects with Hopewell. And I understand the concern. I would hope, and I propose, that in the near term, hopefully, we can, as a city, be addressing a roundabout at that intersection, just to correct the offset in the Thompson Road as it intersects with the Hopewell Road. I think obviously that's going to lower the speed limit and allow a lot easier ingress-egress to that establishment, Hopewell Road, and as Bell Memorial develops, I think we'll probably see some more traffic there, but I think having a roundabout there is going to improve the safety of those people using Bell Memorial in the future, too. So I'd recommend to our city manager and council that we look at putting a roundabout in there in the future.
Matt, did you have something?
I want to wait till after here for the presentations.
All right. If that's all the questions right now, I'll open up the floor for those that are speaking in favor of this application.
Our first speaker is Ms. Deborah C. Anthony.
Well, I see the clock is ticking so hard. I'm Deborah Anthony, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the applicant. My address is fifty-seven eighty Winwood Parkway, Suite three hundred, Alpharetta, Georgia, three zero zero five. And we're very happy to be here tonight. This is, in a way, an historic moment for us, so we are very happy to present this to you tonight. What we are trying to do is to preserve this property as it is, in keeping with its historic designation, to be a country store. I think similar to what you see when you drive around in the North Georgia mountains. It's a little bit of everything and not a lot of anything. So what we're trying to do is to preserve the character of the building, and so at the same time, what we would like to do in keeping with the conditions is to reduce the impact on the surrounding areas through the use of buffers, landscaping, and screening to comply with the Northwest Fulton overlay, and in fact, this is probably a model for the Northwest Fulton overlay, and also to incorporate signage that's in keeping with the store. And I think on the flip side, we have an old picture of signage on the store, and it's just part of the nostalgia of the store that we're trying to preserve. We have actually been spending quite a bit of time with Public Works, and Mr. Chatham can go into more detail about that, but we want to be aware of what's already there as far as the road, and to try to work with it as best that we can. And the use of the property is not so large that in itself, that it creates as big an impact as, say, even the park does, but by the same token, we would like to do everything that we could to make the site safe. We would like to reserve the majority of our comments in order to address public comment, so I will, for the moment, step aside and let them speak.
Do we have anyone else at this point wants to speak in support?
We do. We have Mr. Michael Martin.
Yes, hello. I'm Michael Martin, and I live at eighteen-twenty High Grove Club Drive in the Wood Valley subdivision. I'm a little surprised about the situation that presents itself here today, and there's something I don't understand, and I'd like to ask one question before proceeding. Is this half of the property that's being considered and the other half of the property is not? Because I was under the understanding that the house next to the building being considered was part of the property, and more of that long brown stretch was as well.
Would you not, you know, I'd be glad for staff to answer.
The answer is that half of the property is being considered for rezoning. The other half, where the residential home is, is not being considered, that is being left alone.
Okay. Thank you very much for explaining that. Well, personally, I think that's a mistake. I think if this is going to be a historic property, I think the other house should be removed, and I think the whole property should be used that way, and it would create a much greater footprint and allow for more facility with parking and more egress facility as well. I'm concerned because I have a seventeen-year-old daughter who drives, and going through that intersection is one of the most difficult things I do on a daily basis. People come up the road from Birmingham at fifty-five, sixty miles an hour sometimes, and you have two or three seconds to get across that intersection safely, and that isn't enough time for an experienced driver, much less an inexperienced teenager, of which there are many in Milton, especially in that area. So that is my chief concern. I support the development of the country store, so that's why I'm speaking on the support side. But I think more study needs to be gone into the intersection. Councilman Luss made a comment about a roundabout. I can see that being a worthy improvement. I'm not sure that I would choose a roundabout. I think I would choose an intersection with a light there, but either of those things would be an improvement. But I don't think this should go forward until the intersection issue is clarified further, so that everybody has a feeling of safety with this particular project. And I would urge the council to hold this in abeyance and go back and study what is actually going to happen with that intersection before they improve the continuance of this project. Also, I believe there was something in the beginning that said that the council had the power to change some of the conditions, and so I think you have more power than you think you have in this particular case. I think you can really move things around a little bit, increase the property footprint for this project, make sure the site, since we have a fire station just down the road there, and that should be considered, the ingress and egress of the fire station and emergencies. So I want to say that I support the project, but I think each of you has to take the intersection into account with this project and the whole impact. And the additional property, that I do not understand why they're not including that in the thing if they really want a nice project, and I think that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any others in support?
That's all we have in support.
Okay. We'll open up to any comments in opposition.
We have one name, individual, that would like to be read into the record, Joan Borzelli, five forty Kings County Court, Milton, Georgia, in opposition, but she does not wish to speak, and we do not have any other speakers in opposition.
Okay. If that's all the public comment, then I'll close the hearing and... Before you do that, the applicant still has time to move. Yeah, I'm sorry. I do know they have time if they want any rebuttal or comments, and then we'll also, I'm sure, have the applicant come up and answering questions.
We have four and a half minutes.
If you've got four and a half minutes, if you want to use them. If not, we'll certainly be asking you questions.
I think we can just wait and see if there are any questions.
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing, and go ahead, Mr. Chatham.
My name's David Chatham. I live at eighteen sixty-five Bethany Way, and I represent the applicant. One comment I do want to make about the line of sight on Hopewell, we have revised the site plan, which I think we have passed out to you tonight, where we have reversed the parking and moved the curb cut to the very extreme south end of our property line to create a little more distance on the line of sight. But even with that, we're a little short, about twenty-five feet short of the perfect regulations that are required. Otherwise, we meet the line of sight going the other directions. I just wanted to mention that. We have reversed that since, I think, the plan that was shown on the screen. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll close the public hearing and open up to, for any questions or comments from council or any motions moving forward.
I have one, I do have one question of staff. One of your conditions said food preparation is prohibited. Now, I thought preparation of food's kind of a historic thing. Now, I thought preparation of food's kind of a historic thing that happens and has been happening for many years. So why is the preparation of food prohibited on the site? I guess I don't understand exactly what that means and why it is prohibited. Clearly, I can understand why automotive is prepared and specialty and all of that is prohibited, but preparing food's kind of something that's been happening for a long time.
Right, right. And I guess it comes down to the degree of preparing the food in the sense that, you know, we did not want it to get into a restaurant-type use. But, you know, of course, if you had a sandwich counter or something like that, you know, I guess it's all a degree, but it was something we discussed with the planning commission as well, and they really felt that they really wanted to stay away from that and keep more the general store and have prepared sandwiches that could be brought in to be sold, for instance, but not do it there on the site.
Well, then, I've got a question for the applicant then.
Actually, what we just read up here, delicatessen.
Yeah, I think, I thought so, too. I thought that was...
We actually didn't say anything about it, but yes, we would like to...
I mean, historically, were sandwiches made and prepared and served at that store? Because, I mean, I think the whole purpose of this ordinance was to make sure we kept the uses similar to what they were at the time the property was built. So I want to make sure that that's what we're doing here. And if sandwiches used to be prepared there and served, then that would fit in. If they didn't, then it wouldn't. Sure.
This was my Uncle Bill and Aunt Margaret Hardeman's store, and they did have fresh meats and fresh cheeses and bread, and they did make sandwiches on the site. He'd also sometimes have, like, sausage and biscuits, you know, things like that. It was a general country store. He had a little bit of everything, so... But I've eaten there myself, so as a little boy, so it was, that was done. Food prep was done on-site. And I think we have to probably, according to your ordinance, include delicatessen, because that's the way you're able to do food prep. And I think we were on the impression that you did include it in the reading tonight, even though it was not read that way previously, unless I misunderstood. That's why we didn't say anything about it earlier.
Yeah, I think it's...
So you might want to clarify that for us.
If it's a country store, typically, you'd probably have somebody in the back making sandwiches or even homemade meatloaf and that kind of stuff, too. But obviously, I know you have to, there's modern health department rules and all that. You have to abide by, but I believe, didn't, it did include delicatessen.
Yes, it does include it. It says catering, carryout, delivery, delicatessen. Homemade food.
Can I clarify that for your councilman?
So that's okay, just, so where it says food preparation, I mean, that just to me, it looks like we almost have a conflict within what we say we're applying for and what we say is not allowed. Because we're saying that, so is food preparation allowed or does following uses shall be excluded? Food preparation's the first one.
That's what the planning commission said.
Yeah, the planning commission said that, but I'm looking at our recommended conditions. It says the following uses shall be excluded: garage, automobile repair, specialty shop, gas station.
Okay, our copy says food preparation, but yours does not say food preparation.
Why don't you explain the difference, Rob, if you would, please? So staff had our recommendation, which originally did include those uses of delicatessen, food preparation, based on the letter of intent by the applicant. We went to the planning commission, and we stated in the front of the report what the planning commission, what they voted on. And they voted, part of their conditions were, if you go to page two, uses be the same as the prior use, but does not include delicatessen, catering, carryout, and no food preparation on premises. So I apologize for the confusion, but staff would actually prefer it to be more consistent with the historic use. But we reflected the conditions in the staff report to show what the planning commission had recommended. So that's the difference. So it's up to you to decide which, you know, what you would prefer.
Whether or not the food preparation's in or out.
Right. And I think they kind of struggled with it, too. I mean, they were discussing what's carryout. I mean, you carry everything out of a store, so, anyway.
Yeah, one of the discussions on the planning commission as well, I think, they were worried about the sewage capacity, primarily with food prep on that property. And so a continuous stream of food prep was the issue. So again, like Kathy was saying, I think the degree was the question. We didn't really specify what that degree was. So I think a good question on that, but...
To clarify that, though, wouldn't that be, that'd be a health department issue, wouldn't it? As far as the actual food and the menu?
Well, yeah, you'd have to have...
And all that.
You'd have to have the grease trap and all that stuff would be inspected by the health department, of course.
Right. I mean, I think they would make a call on that, which is us trying to decide what can be prepared.
That's right. But there was a discussion, and, you know, at the planning commission, about food preparation. Should that be in or out? And what type of, you know, does carryout, delicatessen, and all of those relate to that? And what to do with that, so...
Let me be clear on this, then. Are you recommending to go along with the planning commission's recommendations or not?
Rob, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was...
Clarify this. Are you recommending, is one of your recommendations to go along with the planning commission's recommendations to exclude carryout, delicatessen, and...
I believe originally, we wanted to be consistent with the applicant's request, which was in the presentation, and that's why it was inconsistent.
Could you, do you mind just pulling that slide again from the presentation on what was recommended is allowed versus what's not? In that way, we're seated.
Yeah.
You mean what the planning commission wanted, or...
No.
You have two slides. Is that what it could be and couldn't be?
Right.
And I think those are, Kathy ran through those relatively quickly.
It's under recommended conditions after the status of review.
These were what were recommended, yeah. Here we go.
All right, right here, there we are. Okay. So you'll see in there that we recommend catering, carryout, delivery, delicatessen.
Okay. So that is different than what we have on our stuff? Because what we have is the planning commission's stuff.
Yeah, this is updated.
Okay.
Yes, right. We updated it. So we took out the food preparation, but there is a little inconsistency in here. But I think, again, they want to stay away from the restaurant, so they felt the food preparation was moving you, again, that's that degree here, that was moving you toward, you know, a full-fledged restaurant, so they were...
The reading this, to me, would carry out the intent of what I believe we would all think a country store would be able to do or have. Would you not, would you agree?
I would, yes, sir.
The one question I had on it earlier was Christmas trees. I'm allowed to have Christmas trees, but then it stipulated that it has to be under the porch or inside, which, you know, in my picture of a country store, a little corner market, you're going to have Christmas trees outside if you were to sell Christmas trees. So is that something that, you know, there's a reason for that, obviously. I mean, I can understand wanting to restrict having things stored outside, but is that something that staff would go along with it, would make an exception on a seasonal-type sale item, you know, I guess put that in the grass areas or the septic, you know, septic areas or the secondary?
Yeah, I think on a case-by-case, we could certainly look at it. You know, the idea is you don't want to spill over all over the whole site, the site is tight as it is, so that it's something through a permitting process that we could look through on a seasonal basis.
We do have a use, excuse me, we do have administrative use permit for seasonal sales, so if he wanted to sell some trees, he can come in and it's administrative permit, so just for a limited time during holiday seasons.
That's an allowable use in AG1.
Correct, right, yes, correct.
Karen?
Couple of questions. Number one, I assume most of the parking's going to be impervious, it's not going to be, is it going to be paved or non-paved, or what's the parking going to be?
Paved, it's all paved.
It's all paved, it's there? Are there going to be paving, any additional other than the roads? Because I know we're trying to get away from paving everywhere.
There's already enough...
Paving there?
Paving there, yeah, to accomplish the parking we're showing on our site plan.
And the buffers, are we, what, are we making them replant stuff in the landscape strips? Or is it, I mean, what you don't want is something that looks real formal in a country store landscape strip. So is it going to be natural buffers, or is it, what is, is there something that has to be put back in there?
Rob, are you going to... You're speaking of the western portion of the buffer?
Uh, yes.
Or just the landscape strips?
Both the landscape strips and the buffer. I mean, what you don't want is it to be something that looks real structured, because this is a, that wouldn't be in keeping.
I mean, the arborist can work with them. There's certain species and types of plantings that are required, but he can make it so it's not so structured.
So something that would have been there a hundred years ago, not something that's Leland Cypress lining the size.
Exactly. And the landscaping plan would be part of the review by the HPC in order for them to get their certificate of appropriateness. So again, we would go back to a historic type of setting in terms of the landscaping.
Okay.
Is there anybody else?
Yeah, I got him.
Matt?
Yeah, Joe.
Joe, yeah, go ahead, Joe.
On page twenty, in the owner's agreement, there was a stipulation on item H, under item, or it's section eight, or question three, item H, whatever we want to call it. The proposed port from the south side of the building, as depicted on the revised site plan dated June 29th, shall not be constructed. Was that a requirement of ours, or was that something that the applicant reviewed and decided they didn't need? I'm just trying to understand, was that a restriction that we placed that the applicant agreed to? Because in my mind, you know, porches, yeah, those outside porches sort of make the site look more like a country store, so I'm just wondering.
Is it porch or a handicap ramp?
No, it's a porch. Basically, I can address that issue. This structure had been designated as historic structure earlier, or last year, and a part of designating historic structure, you cannot add to it. And so that porch does not exist right now as well as at the time that it was designated, and we asked the applicant to take it off, and they didn't take it off, so we just went ahead and put a condition to make it clear that no addition can be put onto the building based on the historic structure status of the building.
Karen?
I already got a couple of questions. And historically, in our city's past, I mean, this thing's been paved for a long, long time. And I'm just curious, you know, why when we did the initial land use plan, you know, we designated it as AG1 to begin with. And I wasn't here during that discussion. I wasn't sure if it was something that was just missed, or if that was, you know, a discussion that happened. I just don't know the background on that, if anybody had any comments on that. It's paved, it is paved now, it was always paved. Why did we designate it as AG1 to begin with? I'm just kind of curious. Did we ever discuss it? You were Kathy, so I'm sure you did.
I'm going to let Rob, and she's got the institutional memory.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Maybe you can have a little bit of this institutional memory. At the time that the comp plan was done, this H zoning designation didn't even exist at the time.
Right. So it was, that was basically, was forced into that from that standpoint, okay. You know, what is our, you know, as a city, what is our liability? And here's why I ask this. You know, I drive down that road all the time, and that Thompson Road intersection is awful, and it needs to be fixed. And I, there's a lot of things I look at from this, from a liability standpoint, and I'm just wondering, you know, what is, as a city standpoint, if there is an accident on Thompson Road, and it's very possible that there can be because of the current speed limit requirements, because of the hill as you're coming south on Hopewell, people can't see anybody coming through, people trying to turn right on Thompson Road. It's, it is a crazy, crazy intersection. And, you know, I don't know from a timing perspective that doing this now may be the right thing to do. Does that make sense from a safety perspective? And I'm curious, as a city liability, you know, if we do this, what is our liability if there's an accident on that? If we push something through, and when the speed limit conditions aren't necessarily safe for seventeen-year-olds, for example?
If I may, Sarah is here from the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department has reviewed this plan to make sure it's consistent with all of the requirements for traffic and speed and access and whatnot. So if you'd like, I can have Sarah address that.
I think it's important.
So one of the first things we do is look back to the comprehensive transportation plan that was done in December 2009 is when it was completed. And this particular intersection actually wasn't identified as an improvement in the CTP. But since that time, we're currently working through a scoping for the Bell Park development. And as part of that, in the scope, we've included the evaluation of the Hopewell-Thompson intersections. So that's definitely going to be looked at in the very near future. It wasn't, like I said, originally identified in the CTP, so that's where we are with that intersection.
So timeframe-wise, and maybe, Mr. Chatham, you can talk about this as well, if you were to have approval on this, at one point, will it be operational compared to when we have a functioning traffic intersection? I don't know the answer to that. What do you think?
Let me mention now that the asphalt, if you've noticed, just sort of goes out into the street with no, we're actually going to be improving the corner by putting in curb and gutter and putting in curb cuts, if you will, with right-in, right-outs. So we should actually improve the safety of the intersection. You've only got five parking spaces, so you're not talking about, it's only eleven-hundred feet, and it's not a big building, so you're not going to have a lot of people in there more than likely. So I think we actually, just by doing those improvements on the corner with the curb and gutter and the curb cuts, actually will help it even now. I wouldn't want to be obligated to wait until the city approves the intersection. I have no, I've waited for six years to even get to tonight, so I'd like to go forward if I could.
Okay. You know, I'd just like to, because everybody else has had a chance to talk, I, you know, I'm concerned about the intersection, and we've heard that from some comments and all. You know, I don't know scientific-wise or engineering-wise if this is the case, but I could almost see having something living and breathing there, some activity, would almost slow traffic down a little bit if they're coming flying over there, if they know there's a store there and they see it and all that. You know, I think temporarily or in the short term, our, the only thing we can do is maybe have our police department patrol that area more consistently to get people in the habit of slowing down in that intersection. And then, again, long-term, hopefully, we can do something with it. But, you know, I'd just like to say, as a citizen and someone who's lived here, I guess I'm a newcomer, but lived in the area about twenty, twenty-four years or so. When I first moved into what is now Milton, I enjoyed, there was a few country stores, and I'll never forget, I'd go up and introduce myself, and they'd say, oh, yeah, you bought the old so-and-so's property, and I need a new lawnmower, and they said, okay, we'll order you one. And a week later, my wife says, they dropped off a lawnmower, just said, come pay them when you get a chance, or if you needed something, or, you know, I can see this as, you know, folks from the park or people that live around or people going by, they're stopping in and picking up a jug of milk or sandwich or whatever. You know, long-term, I think that could help traffic because they don't have to go further in Milton. So, you know, and also, I think people, there's been concern about spot zoning and commercial zoning. I think if we limit it to this use and with this designation, that shouldn't be a problem. And, you know, Milton wants to be, you know, rural and equestrian feel and old time, and I think there's nothing better than a country store with friendly people. So I'm in favor of this application. My only concern is traffic, and if we can, you know, long-term address it, short-term possibly, you know, Chris, if you can have our police department take a look at it, and, you know, again, if this were to pass, you know, either way, we've heard the concerns, and we need to have a little more traffic calming out there physically, so... So with that, we'll just, unless anybody's got specific questions, kind of open up.
I just want to ask the city attorney one thing. I just want to make sure that everyone does understand that because this is a specific H zoning and it's not a commercial zoning, it will not set a precedence for any of the other properties around there unless they too qualified for the H zoning.
That is correct. They would have to independently meet our historic requirements and they'll still set no precedent otherwise.
Maybe go further to that point. Once this zoning classification is granted, there's no possibility of reversing it to another zoning classification.
Is that a question?
Yes.
A lot will know that that's entirely accurate. I think that a future council would retain their legislative discretion to zone it in the future. So I, yeah, I think that's-
That would, that could be the case anywhere though.
That's, yeah, it would, there's nothing special about the H zoning that makes that. That would be the case with any zoning. Nothing, nothing could go wrong about this one.
Mayor, I just want to say one thing for the record since we're kind of in the middle of a zoning case. I just want to clarify that we've had some strong comments tonight made onto the safety aspect of this intersection and whether or not it's a safe place or whether or not any liability attaches to the city as a product of making some of those comments. I just want to say and have on the record that, yes, we can think some of those things and it's the council's job to evaluate some of those things, but we haven't looked at any independent traffic data in making those conclusions tonight. So I just want to make sure that those aren't perceived as being comments based upon actual traffic study and data by traffic engineers. It's great to think those things, I probably think them too. I just don't want the record tonight to be perfected with us taking ownership of a dangerous intersection that we may or may not be in the process of studying.
And we, are you saying we have not done a traffic study on this?
Oh, no, I'm saying that it has been studied, but as it was studied in the comprehensive transportation plan, the CTP, it didn't rise to the level of priority that we have distributed our resources to at this point. So we figured out what the priorities have been and that's where we throw our resources. And this one just didn't rise to that level. Now, I, I give it to you all day long, it's an offset intersection and I have to travel through it when I go to Bell Memorial Park and it's, it's not fun. I just don't want us to inadvertently attach a level of responsibility or, or acceptance to an intersection with problems if we haven't really evaluated independent data to make those conclusions. I just want that to be a part of the record if this were to ever be challenged.
Do we evaluate any data of what would happen if there was, I mean, obviously there's only five parking spaces. So it probably wouldn't be too much, but I'm just, my thought is, again, just the speed at which someone tries to pull out of that country store as people are flying up by, there was hard enough just to turn right on Thompson. And, you know, I, I look at it, you know, I, I guess this would be my last comments, you know, I, I think it's a great opportunity to have a country store there, I really do. I, I think that it's not going to be a commercial aspect, how are you going to make money on it? I don't know, honestly. I, I've looked at it every way there is. You know, if we do a roundabout there, it would be perfect. If we do a roundabout near his property, you know, he, he, I think he's going to get a higher profit from it if the city has to buy it because of the situation we put on it. So where we put that roundabout is going to be important as well. And we haven't even discussed that. And so I, you know, I, I, I just think we're putting the cart before the horse here. I, I think this is going to pass tonight. I may not vote for this just because we're being a little bit too premature in my mind. But, you know, and it's no against the applicant, because I appreciate what he's trying to do. But I think from a priority perspective, I have a hard time getting around to what I perceive to be safety. And I just don't know that I can do that based on what I know about that intersection. And what it feels like to go through it, that's what it is.
Bill?
I'd like to address that. As an engineer, I think what's shown on this site plan is an improvement to this intersection by establishing curb and gutter around the Hopewell side and the Thompson roadside by showing a right-in and a right-out onto Hopewell Road. That's tremendously better, more safe than what the situation is at this point in time. It's not perfect. I think that whole intersection needs to be addressed. And I would hope down the road that near-term, we can start studying that. But these curbs and gutters are going to prohibit cut-through traffic going across the front of the building and making left-hand turns out onto Hopewell Road. So in my professional opinion, I think this is a vast improvement to this intersection.
Lance?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Councilman Lust had to say there. And also, I believe with, you know, the Bell Park development, and you said that this intersection will be looked at as part of the Bell Park improvements, that with the development of Bell Park and the property right along Hopewell Road, I would believe that this store will have a lot of pedestrian traffic coming to it as well from the park. There are no sidewalks. All I'm saying is that they would have, and again, that can be looked at as far as the, the park development. But to have, you know, it will be more traffic other than just car traffic coming to it. And I believe this is a complimentary use to go along with the, with the park. And as far as the intersection, I mean, there's a lot to look at in terms of, but the, the offset is to the north. So I believe any intersection improvements would have to be pushed northward, not to the south, which would have less impact on this property from my, my engineering perspective, just to kind of look at it, so.
Joe, do you have any comments, final comments or questions?
Well, yeah, no, I'm, the traffic is a concern, but, you know, we've got experience in Milton where the traffic issues, you know, have, have not been as drastic as what we initially suspected based on studies and things like that. I'm not trying to, you know, minimize the concern. But just as an example, the gas station that went in at the corner of Bethany Bend and Highway Nine, we had a lot of concerns about the traffic there, that it was going to cause, certainly the oblique angle that that intersection has caused some additional problems. And what we've really seen since that station has gone in is that the traffic has, has not been impacted in a dramatic way. So, and, you know, I, you know, take those things very seriously, but I also know that, you know, to just second what Bill and Lance had to say, that those things have a way of sorting themselves out. And I think that in this particular case, it's, it's actually an improvement.
Okay, thanks. The only thing I would add is, is I do think with this, the revised site plan versus the existing conditions right now, it would, in my opinion, safer because people can't just cut through it any, in any way. They're pulled further south. The other thing, and to Chris's point, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, we need to separate the two issues. If this is approved, it doesn't necessarily mean it's making this intersection a more unsafe intersection. And all of our intersections, obviously, can be unsafe. Anytime there's two cars going, you know, they could be unsafe. And as Chris said, you know, this one, just by statistics, is not, is not ranked at the time. You know, we need to keep looking at it and things will change and we need to take that as a priority. But we need to be careful that we're not, you know, saying that if this zoning passes that we, you know, made an intersection more unsafe. Again, my personal opinion is, once you have something here, I think people will look around and possibly go a little slower as they see some activity or whatever, but that's just a personal opinion, so.
You have another question? One last one, is there a, is there a liability to the applicant if there's an accident on that? If he does the intersection improvements and they don't work? I was just curious, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, if-
Is there liability to the applicant?
Yeah.
You know, again, you're, and you're asking questions that contain a million variables.
Sure.
Which would depend upon the nature of the accident, what caused it, causation, assuming that the intersection was done improperly. And you probably get into the point that really any sort of an answer, all I can tell you for purposes of tonight's meeting is that if you want to exercise your legislative discretion and approve this zoning, you don't need to be worried about potential liability to the city of Milton in doing so. I can say that comfortably.
All right, anything else or anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Bill?
A move to approve RZ 12-15, 15260 Hopewell Road by Reunion Park LLC to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to H, H District for the existing building to be utilized as a country store on .524 acres. Agenda item number 13-032.
I'll second it, and I'm assuming this is with the conditions as recommended by staff.
Madam Councilmember, yes, I believe the discussion we've had, the one that was recommended by staff at this point would allow for delicatessen to occur. I want to bring one other point to you because if it's, if we're going to do this and if it has the potential of passing, we want to make sure it's right. There is one thing in the staff section that I, I want to point out to you that is in, in number F, the letter F, and number three, which says, shall be in compliance with the City of Milton sign ordinance, chapter sixty-four of the city ordinance for all future signage. To bring that to your attention because that would prohibit the types of signage you have seen on the building tonight presented to you. The Coca-Cola sign on the side of the building or the historic sign. It is staff's recommendation, I guess if we're going to make a recommendation, the staff's request that you consider potentially striking that if in fact you want that type of signage to be reflective of what we traditionally believe to be an old country store, meaning the wall signage.
I thought they referenced the signage in one of the other recommendations to section the new historic-
If you strike three F, you'll be, it'll be-
Let's, we'll strike three.
I'll second that strike.
Do you want to clarify your motion, Councilmember Lust? Your second?
Move to approve the RZ 1215 as read with the exception of article 3F, which I recommend to be deleted from this motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, another motion, the House of Representatives. City Attorney?
Just two points very quickly. Councilmember Longoria, since you are participating remotely and the, the staff report was done by way of visual, but you did hear all of them when Ms. Fields read through them?
Ken, I apologize, you're going to have to repeat that because you did come through very clear.
Just wanted to confirm, since you are participating remotely, the staff recommendations as to conditions are actually visually displayed on monitors, but you did hear Ms. Fields read through them, just to confirm you actually were able to participate meaningfully, is my point.
Yeah, that was, this was our first time.
Hey, Joe?
You can't tell, I vote that I stipulate explicitly.
Joe, he's asking you to confirm that you've heard everything that was said tonight in the meeting.
Well, that's, I, I would say yes, that I have heard everything that was said. Ken, in particular, you must have something over at the microphone, because I can't hear you very well. But I can hear everybody else very well.
That's fine.
We start referring to him as mumbles.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion, seconds or any other discussion?
I'd like to say, just one more, again, you know, I hope you're successful. I'm going to say no on this, just from the timing of it and that standpoint, but, you know, I wish you luck.
Okay. There's no other, all in favor, a motion, a second for approval with a couple of conditions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's five for approval, one for not approved. Okay, thank you very much. So we have no other items and unfinished business, so we'll move into new business, which we've also got one other new business item we'll add, number three.
Our first item is consideration to accept an application for the abandonment of a portion of Black Oak Road. Agenda item number thirteen, zero, four, three, Ms. Sarah Leaders.
I think Sarah's growing.
I was just hoping she was going to be here.
Yeah.
All right, so this is a initial consideration of an application we received, we received for abandonment as part of our recently revised privatisation and abandonment policies. This is the first step in that process. It's really just acknowledging that we've received the application and it's the step in the process. If you'll want any comments or input going forward on any next steps. And the decision tonight is to accept it for further processing or reject the application. And acceptance in no way is approval of the application or the abandonment at this point. This application, like it says, for a portion of Black Oak Road. Black Oak is a dead-end gravel road. It's the last intersection on Hopewell before the county line. And the existing conditions are a sixty-foot right-of-way that's approximately seventeen hundred and fifty feet long. And the request is to abandon the last thousand feet of the, the right-of-way. The right-of-way and access to all of the existing homes would remain as part of the abandonment. There are currently two owners that front the, the piece that is requested to be abandoned. And that is Hopewell Holdings, who is in contract with the developer to sell, and the Manor Golf and Country Club, and both have provided letters of consent at this time. So with that, I'll take any, any questions on the, the process beyond this point and-
Do we have any questions for Sarah on this?
No. This is just to go forward, allowing them to continue with the process.
Right, and the next step is the, for them to provide a good bit of the, the more detailed information. So this is just to, to-
This is that step we implemented, just to make sure that we didn't say, go spend a whole bunch of money if we really don't have any interest in doing it. This is exactly what that step is.
Sure.
In the package I've got here, exhibit B, appears that they're showing where the existing road will, right-of-way will terminate there, there will be a bald cul-de-sac or something, some sort of turnaround.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, if, Joe, you got anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'm open for a motion.
May I make a motion that we approve a consideration to accept an application for the abandonment of a portion of Black Oak Road, agenda item number thirteen, zero, four, three.
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a motion for approval and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, the city court can sound the next item for us.
Our next item is consideration of a resolution supporting local legislation by the Georgia House of Representatives and Senate amending and clarifying the City of Milton Charter. Agenda item number thirteen, zero, four, four, Mr. Chris Lagerblatt.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this was an item that was worked on jointly between both me and Mayor Lagerblatt. So I'll defer to the mayor if he wants to make this presentation, if you'd like me to make it, either way works.
You can go ahead, Chris, obviously add to it.
Okay. What we have before us tonight is a resolution that we would deliver potentially to our local delegation tomorrow morning, asking them and seeing, asking them to make the changes that the state is required to make to our charter that was at the end of the Charter Commission that was in place, as well as other input that's received in this process. There are certain things that the Charter Commission recommended that we can handle by home rule and we can clean some of those items up, and it doesn't require the state to act. There are five issues in particular that do require the state to act. And this resolution would seek to ask them to take that action. As you're aware, our local delegation is Representative Jones in the Hill in the House, Senator Albers and Beach in the Senate. The five items, and I'll walk you through the resolution here just very quickly and if you have any questions. The first topic deals with redistricting. As a product of the 2010 census, the districts that exist, the six districts that you all run from, are out of line as far as population. And there is the desire, I believe it was the desire of the Charter Commission, and I believe it's you all's desire to potentially consolidate those six districts into three, where there would be two council members from each district on an alternating schedule for election, meaning that you wouldn't have any two council members up for election at the same time. State reapportionment has gone through and drawn maps and has balanced those districts. And I think you've seen the map at, at some point. And this just seeks to give our consent or authorization to ask- authorization to ask them to redistrict the city. The second thing is to clear up and strengthen or further clarify what is intended with the mayoral veto in the charter. There's been some interpretation that we did have a mayoral veto in the charter, although the majority that was required to overturn the veto was the same simple majority as it was potentially to take the action, and what that does is practically cause that veto to not exist, so because that, we believe, to be potentially ambiguous in the charter, to ask them, to ask the General Assembly to clarify what that means. The third item that's in this resolution deals with what we have called the milage rate cap language in our charter. We've got language that has been interpreted by legislative council to potentially be ambiguous in that. If there was an opinion that had to be generated from a court as to what that actually meant, would the court take the supermajority requirement that's in our charter today and say that's what it actually meant, because that is arriving at a conclusion that really is impossible? And if you're going to arrive at a place that you really can't get to, certainly the person that wrote it wasn't trying to say that when they wrote it. Now, we're not suggesting that's exactly what they'd say, but it's ambiguous enough that legislative council in our city and in Johns Creek and in Sandy Springs has issued an opinion that we should seek clarification as to what that milage rate cap language means, and that potentially it would apply to the operating budget and not necessarily to bonded debt if the city were to seek bonds in the future. That's number three in here. The fourth one dealt with the term limits of mayor and council. Representative Jones did some research and had the Georgia Municipal Association conduct some survey research of other municipalities, and was able to, of more than 500 cities in the state, find only two that had a simple two-term limit bracket, I guess. She was able to find only, or less than twenty-five of the cities that were surveyed that even had any type of a term limit. So in keeping with what would be more appropriate in this area, her recommendation, and I believe this council, if you approve this resolution, would support it, would be to modify that from two until three terms. And finally, we've asked for a clarification that really cleans up what I think we've wanted to do since the very beginning, and that is to allow the responsibilities and the ability to serve as the mayor pro tem to be, for everybody on the council to be afforded the opportunity to have that, and instead of it being a four-year appointment as it's currently written, that would be an action that we would take at the first meeting of every calendar year in January to elect a mayor pro tem from amongst the ranks of the council, and this just would further solidify that it's okay to do that every January the first, as opposed to having to try to do it every four years. With the non concurrent terms, it was difficult to figure out how that actual process occurred. This will clarify that. Those are the five items that this resolution seeks to either send our support for or not. It is the opinion of the local delegation, and we certainly like their opinions and certainly respond to their requests. They would like this council to say, yes, we could either support it, we don't support it, you take it as action, they want your involvement when our charter changes, and that's what this document would do, is to say you're either supportive of them taking these actions or not. If in fact you're supportive and this resolution approves, I would deliver it to the Capitol tomorrow, and Representative Jones, Senator Albers, and Beach would then work together to introduce some local legislation as early as next week to start these changes in progress. I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions. I hope I've summarized it well, but I'm willing to summarize it further if it needs to be.
Yeah, I think you did a good job, Chris, and I know we've all talked, but is there any questions for Chris or may I? May I just? Okay. I'll just open up for a motion now.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consideration of resolutions supporting local legislation by the Georgia House of Representatives and Senate amending and clarifying the City of Milton Charter, agenda item thirteen dash oh four four.
Second motion.
Okay, got a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mayor, before you move on, would you check with Councilmember Longoria since I'm going to be on this tomorrow? Just if he will give us express permission to sign his name to the resolution.
Councilmember Longoria, you still there?
Yes.
Okay, did you vote affirmatively on that?
I did, I did.
Okay, and will you give permission to, for us to add your name on that, since you're not here?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Did we vote on that? Make sure.
You did.
All right, so that's approved, we'll move on to our next item that we added with the agenda change.
Our final item under new business, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Milton in opposition to House Bill 176, limitation on municipal zoning authority for cell towers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, bring this one to you tonight because there has been some controversy over a bill that was introduced in the House that I believe we need to go ahead and take a position on. It is House Bill 176, and what it seeks to do if it were to be successful in any condition that it exists in today is to regulate away local municipalities' ability to regulate through their zoning code, the site placement, and height restriction and covered area stuff. Basically removes your ability to regulate cell towers in Milton and places that responsibility with the state. It would remove our ability, you can read the bullet points, remove our ability to even determine a rental rate for a cell tower that we placed on our property. Seeks to have the state be the group that would do all these things as a piece of legislation, being a part of a municipality and with fundamental belief that good government is the government that governs closest. This is moving in the wrong direction, and I think that it's moving in the wrong direction enough that we should at least tell our local delegation more officially what our position is on it. I can tell you the City of Sandy Springs adopted a similar resolution last night, and the City of Alpharetta will be contemplating one early next week. This is our last meeting in February, which is why I thought it would be appropriate to bring it forward quickly. I'm happy to answer any questions, this just sends our message that we would like to retain these regulation authorities locally as opposed to giving them to the state.
And this is a piece of legislation that the GMA, I know, is in strong opposition to also.
That is correct.
Yeah, I would just add too, and obviously, and I think even for our citizens' sake, you know, whether you support, approve, or don't approve cell towers, it's good to have the control on the local level rather than the state, so. Is there any other questions? Okay, I'll open up the floor.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Milton in opposition to House Bill 176, limitation on municipal zoning authority for cell towers.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Thurman. Any comments? Joe, did you hear the motion?
I did, I did.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, any council members want to report on anything? I hope everybody joins us, the city, for the mayor's run Saturday morning, so looking forward to that. I need some other people that maybe could join me that, you know, don't run a lot, might be real slow. So, but anyways, I always, it's funny, I was telling somebody the other day, I said, you know, they were asking me obviously if I'm going to run, and I said, well, I'm going to run, I just hope no one, you know, watches mere times for me. But what I'm excited about is just, it's another event that just seems to bring the community together and, you know, people have fun, and I'm just excited about the City of Milton, so anyways, hope everybody.
Where is it starting?
It's over Deerfield by the Coles.
Same place they had it last year.
Okay.
And they've got the Public Safety Foundation golf tournament coming up?
Yes, and that's in April.
May first?
May.
May first.
Yeah. Okay. As we added in our agenda tonight, we had an executive session to discuss current litigation. Shouldn't take but a couple of minutes, but we can have a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
Okay, got a motion to move into executive session and a second for to discuss current litigation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
We have a better pen. One's on it, the red pen. What was? I don't know. 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 Okay. 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 Okay.